You got everything you wanted to talk about. Chris, you got anything with the wind farm stuff? Anything at all? Yeah, James texted and said he has nothing new. As of right now.
You guys have good meetings this week?
Yeah, I thought they were productive. Sitting there forward to get something done and get it to us.
Get lined around?
Yep.
What we got?
Okay, we got some concerns about the haul route. Namely, they're on number nine, O Road, at 20 acres. The lay down spot right there. You know, there's two major, you know, haul, long overhaul, heavy haul routes on O Road as well as N Road. And so there's all these wind turbines that the N Roads will feed. As opposed to here, there's two, and then way down here. But we'd like to propose if there's a way that changing the 20 acres here, and maybe put it even up on top of the hill here. I mean, granted, or else even over here. Now, I know that there's a hill coming here from the west. It's hard for the trucks to see, people to see the trucks. But even on the hill would be better because this is a major thoroughfare for farm vehicles. And it's gonna be...
Yeah, that's the main vein that feeds number nine right there. All the agricultural products and everything else goes down there.
Livestock, hay, equipment, everything.
Another concern is the lay down area. Where we're talking, does that setback affect that part two?
There should be a setback there for the Neale House bunch right here. Because they are just, it's gonna be going full force, 24/7. Noisy, lights, everything. And that's just, and the Neale's, they didn't even want this project to be in there. So we're just wondering if there's a way you guys can intervene here, please, to make that location...
Does the setback cover that lay down? Because it should. Because this thing's gonna be noisy. I leafed out for Westar. They're gonna redo that big power line.
On 62.
And it's over there on 62 Highway. And it's right around four acres they're using, right around three. They're gonna lay down their poles and stuff like that. And I contacted my neighbor, the closest one that lives there. I've contacted them. And they know what's going on. And if any complaints, they will, the Larissa, Rick, Rick will take care of it. So see. And he, I wanted it west of my machine shed. Because I'm gonna put hay on there when they're done in two years. So that'd be great. But Rick, even when he takes care of the Westar deal, he said, "This is gonna be noisy. You would not want anything that close to your place." And he said, "We're small. It's just gonna be running like one shift, eight hours, and that's it." But this, and I talked to Ryan. And this will go anywhere between 20 and 24 hour shifts on this thing. And we're talking lights. Mine might have a mercury, we requested no lights. It may have a mercury light on, but to unload and load up 24 hour shift, we're talking about high powered lights there. And it's, I would not wanna be the guy that lives north of it. We're a good set of neighbors. We always talked about what's going on on this area. That's why a lot of us did not sign up for this. We had our meeting and we all went and said, "No, we're not signing up for this stuff." And it's gonna be noisy. It's gonna be lights.
We live a half mile away to the east.
And the haul route, you know, and the next one over on Jim's place is the cement. Over there in the southwest part, there's eight acres there. I asked Ryan, that's gonna be a cement plant.
There's the 20 acres, where's the eight?
Right down there. So why don't they just put it all together? That's where they're gonna put the cement plant. And it's right next to that O Road, I mean, the N Road heavy haul. There again, you're having two heavy hauls, one mile piece. Where you have all the traffic on the O.
Well, this way you can get two good roads. You can keep O Road from getting so torn up. Well, they're gonna rock it, I know, but with heavy, heavy equipment, they can do that to N Road. So you can have two good roads going.
You look at the footage there between where our neighbor lives to the north. And see, that's gonna be, the entrance is gonna be as an backwards L. The entrance is gonna be at the north end because that's the top of that little hill. And that'd be less than, almost, I'd say a quarter of a mile.
So N, you see?
See, there's golf. And there's, the corner would be...
I'm not quite, you'd call a hypocrite on this stuff because of my parking lot. I asked my neighbor, the closest one that's living there. Says, "Okay."
See, all the traffic will be on that road. So they wouldn't need to, I don't know, it just seems...
O Road, that's just a heavy ride.
They're both heavy haul routes, yeah.
The more I live, there's always dust up there. There's always traffic there.
So you probably, just as an example, you signed public construction easement with Westar for that?
What's that now?
Once it's done?
Well, not necessarily.
It's not an expiration date? Two years.
Two years?
Guess I'm surprised it's that long.
Well, that's to give or take weather.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I never did pay attention.
But I've talked with them here recently since this whole haul route comes come up.
Well, this is substantial.
And they said they will not be blocking 62. Because it is a very heavily traveled farm road.
Whatever this is.
That's the proposed, evidently concrete.
That's right.
See, now that would be, that's Jim Dobbin's, right there.
Jim put Jim's up here, probably on 40. Again, 20 to 24 hours, we're gonna be using this. And like Ryan said, there will be three big cranes there all the time, to load and unload. So it's gonna be going all the time.
Even if they could move it on the hill? So see, it wouldn't be good for you neither. And it's, and I don't, did your folks, Greg? Did your folks sign up for anything? So see, it's always impacting the people who are not interested in this part to begin with. So we're getting the brunt of the whole deal. So if you put it down there, most of thisers, they don't want it either. If you put it up there, you know, where it is, the Neale's didn't want it.
But does the setback affect this? There should have been a setback.
This is 20 acres. Are there other proposed sites that mean four or five acres? This is 20 acres.
Is that, and Dobbins are involved in that, would those probably, probably be a construction easement? Because all that would be, do you guys know?
Basically, all I know is that Dobbins has agreed to, I don't know if they suggested it. I don't, I don't know.
Again. Again, does the setbacks affect this?
They should. More so than the turbines and cells because of all the...
The lights, the noise, 24 hours.
On Highway 62, what was that? They had the bright lights, and I mean, we're talking...
Substation.
You could see those things for miles. And we'd wake up at night thinking it was daylight, so...
I thought, "I'm oversleeping, that's the sun coming up."
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I bet Centennial Bank right outside my bedroom. And they've got their lights on 24 hours a day.
Anyway, they were, had, when they had doused those lights because it was not necessary all day long, all night long. So it was awful. It was awful.
I think you guys have enough pull, you can stop that.
You can, please, it's...
Or at least put it on.
There's other options, you know, it's not, we have other options here, it seems like.
You're talking about a company. What is the revenue on, next there, $19 billion? I have a solar pump within a straight west, straight east of a wind turbine. And my problem there is, I put it in O-12. Now, a solar pump is run by solar panels. And you didn't have a panel this long. And I can take a ruder and put a shadl on that very first one. And they're coming little two inch squares. A little cell. And by the time I get, everything shuts down. This whole thing shuts down at one. And it will not start until that last one clears. And I asked Ryan about, you know, I got a $2,100 pump. I want that, you know, if they ever goes wrong. Because when I put that solar pump in, it quit after about 20 gallons. And the engineer, I called up, said, "Well, do you live by a wind turbine?" Because down there in Pratt, that flickering will stop those pumps. Goes on and off, on and off. But all I wanted from this company is just to guarantee me if that does happen to this solar panel, they will at least cover that pump. And his engineer, bringing Ryan, said, "That's a bunch of BS." These are the people you guys are working with. We're talking $19 billion revenue would not cover $2,100 if that happened. And if their engineers that smart calling it BS, and they should not be afraid to sign a paper stating, "We're liable for that pump." All I wanted, that pump, they can put their, leave their tower there, but just cover that in case that does. They can either drill me another well, or just cover it if it does happen.
But they won't sign it?
They won't do it. Ryan said he'll do it. I go, "I want it in paper." You're not gonna live forever, Ryan.
You go to heaven writing that.
Mm-hmm. That's just $2,100. That's the company we're dealing with. And there again, they're throwing their weight around.
Well, they're smooth talkers. Heaven sakes, they came over to our time, our house specifically in summer and very smooth talking.
Well, you have to be.
Yeah.
So our concern is that, that lay down. And again, the setback should be covering that too.
Just looking at the term sheet and that, any construction zones, I was not interested in the term sheet. Setbacks, I mean, there's no specific setback. It just sets forth that all setbacks shall be set forth by the site plan. I'm not as sure of the set plan quite certain, so just determine locations.
So see, they get that, they get that split in there. And like I say, it's always the people who are against this project that have to bear the brunt of this project. And that shouldn't be.
The only good thing that applies, they do have to abide by applicable state laws. So if leasing the land from the Dobbins, and what they plan to do, they would violate a state law, they would not be allowed. Otherwise, the term sheet would not speak to that situation.
I do know that though...
So you think it, and like I talked to Wayne, if they placed this west of Jim's house, off of nine, in there somewhere by his pond or in that area, or on the north side?
It's on top of the hill, you know, it'd be more easily seen.
But I mean, though, that would...
Yeah, that's what I told Ryan.
To use, be more acceptable.
I told Ryan that. Don't take it out on another neighbor.
Or did you even mention?
Who's this, Ryan?
Ryan Legge, he's with Nextera, I'm sorry. L-E-G-G-E. And if you see, like, for some reason, I don't know, I guess it's the lay of the land, they have that in a, I always lose stuff on that. Yeah, it's in an L shape, like this. Even if they would put it the other way. But I guess it's the lay of the land. But you know, if they can, if they can rock mud road to make it a heavy haul road, you'd think they can do something to make it more advantageous for a neighbor here. I mean, they're gonna be on 88 through between R and S. It's a mud road. And it's gonna be, it's a heavy haul road. So they're gonna have to do some major, major work on that to make it a heavy haul road. Surely they can do something with this, with this project.
And who's the individuals, who are the individuals that are impacted by this? The one you keep talking to neighbors?
Um...
But we're a half a mile. We're a half a mile, but I would not wanna live that where he lives.
Okay. So it's, and it's just, yeah.
Okay, we'll have to bring this up to their attention and try to get a change.
Their attention, oh, this is safer, this is safer.
Yeah, that's because we've talked to Ryan Legge. And he said, but you guys, you're the only leverage we have. Because he said they can't change it. I'm not sure what, what was the reason, but it's for safety, you know?
It's possible the state won't allow them to, you know...
Have an entrance on the highway.
For say...
Well, then why would they have a heavy haul road just a mile north? You're gonna have, they're gonna have to turn off the...
Well, but it's not a state highway, but the state...
They gotta get across the highway anyway? You gotta get across.
Well, get across, but making a new entrance, see? And they just, and I don't know, we're gonna find out, we'll talk still.
We'll find out.
But just fight for it, please. I mean, don't, don't just take what they say. Because I, I don't know if...
Do you realize how long we've been dealing with these people? You think we're just taking what they're saying?
I hope not.
I think we've dealt with them long enough that we've realized what we've got in front of us.
Okay, that's good, because they are, they're smooth.
They might be, but we have dealt with them long enough, we know what we got.
And that's part of the reason we've dragged this out, you know, is to...
Make sure it's right.
Make sure it's right.
You know, this is a short term thing, you know that. It's probably a six month, roughly. Well, yeah, it is.
That's what they say, that's what they say.
Once you're done, it'll come down.
Six months, two years.
Put things up.
It'll be a year.
Well, it could be, but I mean, they ain't gonna be lighted up for a full year. I mean, they, once they go to turbines up, that's where the lay down yard.
Not six months. Westar can't get out of there building that from Kelly to Circleville in two years. You're talking about all these turbines being six months?
It's gonna be up and running by the end of the year. That's what they're gonna do. So, you know, yeah, it's gonna be happy.
One thing, we're close knit...
Ryan, Ryan Legge said, "It's gonna suck." That was his quote. "This is gonna suck."
But afterwards, you're gonna like it. And you haven't seen anything I like yet. But you know, we're close knit neighbors in that area, the haul in there. And we're all, usual neighbors used to do it.
We used to be.
Nowadays, we help each other neighbor try to survive and stuff. Now that neighbor can't wait for that one to go broke so he can take the place.
Well, that neighbor wants to change like that, too.
That area's changed, that's, that's serious. No, I'm talking about helping neighbors, helping neighbors.
No, I understand that.
Things have changed.
They're just changing.
Well, it's definitely.
Well, and I do know the Neale's have probably a lot more to say about the road than we do. But this, we learn. And this came from the officer who was shooting with that.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
You guys can have that copy if you want.
Yeah, we'll give it to you.
I got the, I'm sorry, I couldn't get it here to, to use it.
It most likely be a construction easement with Dawkins. Nobody knows that in this room that I know of.
Have you guys thought what it would be? See, because I haven't really, I don't think I've been approached by anybody on any of them. And I for sure didn't catch that. You know, see, there's one down here, two, I see.
That's for the, I think for the overhead power.
Power line.
And what section is that in? 22 of Palm Creek Island?
Yeah, that would be... That would be west of Mark's Rock, that's a couple miles.
You would? Is that insect in 22, huh? It is, yeah. It'll have to be on Mark's Rock, I'm sure.
No. You're 62, I don't know. No, that's 62. That's far. Get a man across.
He's got a half section there.
Mark.
He's got a full half section right there.
No, this is the mile, that's a mile. So this is...
Quarter, quarter.
See, what we're like there...
Oh, he's got the whole south half section.
Yes, he does. So that's what I, I think that's pretty good.
See, and that goes across...
Wow.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the only conversation I've ever had about that to do was talked about it around Kelly, that they're just gonna put a lay down. But that's the only time I've ever...
And there's Kelly there. Okay, we'll have to...
And how far away would this be from your residence?
You know, that's way less than a quarter mile.
So it'd be within the 3,000 feet?
Oh, yeah. Well, we live a little, little, little way, a little bit north of the quarter mile, or that mile, right? And it's just up the hill from that.
I know.
You know, that's where we're thinking they're gonna go, go on top of that hill. There's a lot of traffic, you know? There's just a lot of traffic going down the Route of Ready. We're just kinda worrying what, you know, you know, up north guys come to here, so you know, on the highway. It's an awful busy road. They're very busy. The road down there, to the east of us, the tubes are getting worse back. Like, well, you got like 12 foot wide on a, you know, a couple places, or one anyway. They don't need 14 or not. And that, and it was muddy. And trucks came in, like Jake said, saying, "Got a place to go to haul if you guys want to up that road." Or that's where they always went. I guess I thought, they sit out there in the hot sun, you know, steamy hot. And hopefully, they take that very good. And I just, I just looked at me like, I'm gonna clog things up. Like, if we keep on N Road, it would make things a lot more... If they take care of that. Well, maybe it should, if they put it, if they put it west of Jim's house, it would be, you know, be halfway, you know, be between the neighbors, you know, it would be... Because they go up, they put it west of Matt's house, it'll be closer to a neighbor there. But if they put it like west of Jim's house on that flat area there, on either side, we have a little more equal distance between us, you know, so...
A little bit of blockage from trees and different things too there.
And if they turn off the highway there, it would be easier for them to turn off the highway. If they're gonna turn off the highway, make an intersection, and you got telephone poles, I don't see how they're gonna clear it. And it takes them a while to make a turn. And it'd be a lot more open out there on top of that hill, make a turn out the hill there. Every, every, on that intersection.
And you're turning the lay down yard down, not a concrete, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanna make sure.
Yeah, we just talked about lay down yard.
Yeah.
And it may have something to do with the proposed overhead lines too.
I don't know.
You know, I don't know.
We'll have to, we'll have to check with them. I'm afraid there's nobody here today from them, so, so we...
You gonna be, you gonna be this week?
Ah, probably, I'll bring it up.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
Thanks, look.
When do you expect to have an answer? When do you expect to have an answer?
Oh, gosh.
Well, we've been waiting on the last answer since Christmas.
I guess, I don't really care how long it takes because we just keep dragging our feet until we get the answer. I mean, everybody says that, you know, what we're dealing with. I think we know what we're dealing with. We're frankly getting tired of, well, we're not really dragging our feet, I guess, but we're throwing ten black out to make them drag their feet, for say. It won't be unless we direct the answer right away, so that's fine. You know, if you don't bring this to our attention, how do we know? And we do know.
Try to predict how they're gonna react and how long it'll take them to react. That's what we're asking.
I mean, just being a little common sense, it don't sound like to me it should be that hard to move. But when you're dealing with that state highway, that, that does make it a little different. I don't know how that... I know they don't like making entrances on the highway, state highway. But for something like this, it's still temporary.
Like you said, though.
What's that?
It's only gonna be six months, like you said, though.
I know, temporary, you don't...
But you're still dealing with the state, you know, you're not dealing with us. If you're dealing with us, I didn't make that decision. I can't do it for the state. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not gonna get your hopes up that we can get a change because of the state highway. You know?
And we are...
Yeah, it's pretty simple if we're doing it. If we feel like it ought to be done, bam. But on state highways, it makes it a lot harder.
We are here for you guys. Now, I'm gonna tell you, you look at some of the other counties that's had wind farms. They sat down at a table on Monday morning, signed all the agreements, one day. Signed them and they're gone. And whatever happened, happened. And I'm gonna tell you, so if you don't think we are, well, then that's fine. I guess you've got that right. But we've been fighting for the rights of Deans Hall County citizens all along. And we hope that people realize that. Uh, but, yeah, is there something every week? Yes, there's something every week that shows up. And...
Personally, I thought somewhere along the line, I heard the, the lay down field was gonna be open. Because even during, after construction, they're still gonna have parts laying there. So when they have trouble with the turbines, something, they got the parts already available. So you fix something, one goes bad. So I thought it's gonna be, I thought it's gonna stay.
I don't know that. I mean, they'll have an area somewhere. But is that where they're gonna be centered at when they get done? I, I guess I don't know. I'll find out.
Well, it depends on the agreement that was signed between two parties.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a quick question on the enforcement of the haul route. On the north end of O Road, they're supposed to turn and go west on 88 through. I have one out in front of there. Anyway, it'd be three miles over 63 Highway if they go west on that rock road with the hills. Just to make sure they don't go one mile north and hit the Kelly Route, you know, that blacktop. If that's, how's that gonna be enforced if you guys have gotten that far yet?
Yep, our engineers will be, they're gonna be here 24/7 or wherever they need to be to make sure they're staying where they're supposed to be. Of course, word of mouth, I mean, they can't be everywhere. You know, and we've had township meetings and the townships are aware. And if they're off on a road they're not supposed to be on, they can call whoever the engineer's on site. They'll have their numbers. And get a tag number, or get the vehicle description, whatever it takes. Because if they're on different routes, it will be a fine.
Just hope it's severe enough to get their attention, that is.
Well, and I just, they made the point that at one meeting I was at with the townships that, who gets the money from all that? I said, "Well, I guess we can make this pretty good. Whoever, whichever township you get caught in, we could probably give you that money." We'd have a lot of watchdogs out there then. If they was on the wrong roads and they got caught, they get the money away. We'll see.
Oh, that you're right, those guys are sneaky. And they, they see they can go a mile west, go back to get on the Kelly Road, boom. I can save myself nine miles or whatever.
Especially if they're going north on 63.
Right. You know, there's a process in place.
Yeah, without getting some of the details out, isn't really certainly focused on. To make sure we're significant, to not do that.
Well, you hear stories from other projects, not next to it, I don't know if they are, but they, they wanna go fast, you know? Like a crow flies, you know, they wanna get it fast.
And most of the people, I've, I was talking to a guy down in Line County that's that. But he says you'll have more trouble with your local haulers than you will the ones they bring in out of Wichita or wherever. He said, "The local guys are the ones that know the shortcuts and they're the ones that will be more apt to use it than anybody." But that's to be seen. I don't know. I, you know, I'm gonna, with the fines and the situation we've got set up that, you know, if they get caught a couple, two or three times, you know, they're gonna not be able to haul anymore. We're gonna take them away and they ain't gonna be able to do it, so...
I think it's the second time, though.
Second time.
After the second time, they're gone.
And which, they're working on that?
A lot of them, you know, the company's paying the fines. So in the end, though, we just said, "Okay, if that's gonna happen, after the second time, they're gone." We don't want them around.
We will get their attention.
And just because this says final, doesn't mean we've signed it. We haven't signed it yet.
That's the final proposed.
It's all proposed. And like, I was glad Dwayne brought up my attention on that It's all proposed, and like, I was glad Dwayne brought up my attention on that, because